So you're, why don't I do this first before I forget? I mean, sometimes you can get into the budget and then later on you forgot what you needed to do. But our staff did a great job with this budget. The finance director, our directors, they really put a lot of work. They've been working on this budget now for a solid three and a half months. And so back and forth, looking at things, doing studies, digging into where are things trending, trying to work through five collective bargaining units. We have a sixth one that we're still working to get through. All those were anticipating what could we, what should we be budgeting for salary, fringe, all those costs. So, so I want to thank the team. I think they've, they've done an outstanding job. I'm really pleased with this budget. I think if you take a look at, not that we necessarily compare with all municipalities, but you know, if you take a look at where some of the municipalities are trending right now, most are in that 5% or more in a budget increase. And, and the fact that we're coming in at, at 3.7, I think shows the hard work from our school superintendent, the school committee members. All that started back in December when we had our joint meeting. Council, you gave the directive of what you'd like to see, basically saying, you know, we need to, we need to hold the line on the increases and the impacts to taxpayers. And so, so I think both school and, and city, we've been communicating right along in this process. The superintendent does a great job of, of connecting with me and letting me know where things are. The finance director, Joe Eastman, and, and the, the business manager, Mark, they've been communicating right along. So, so this is a, this budget is a result of a lot of communication, a lot of work from, from our staff and, and our directors, you know, really working through what their requests are. And I'll get into their requests in a little bit and then what I'm proposing. It's not the same. It's not what they would have liked to have seen, but we'll, we'll get into that a little bit. So, so as I mentioned, that December meeting talked about holding the increases to a minimum, provide relief to our taxpayers. Where currently what's being proposed is 2.71% less than the CPIU, which is the Consumer Price Index. In our, in our policy ordinance, it talks about CPIU. That's why we reference that. And so the fact that this is coming in at 2.7% less demonstrates that we've done our best to really hold the line with some of the rising inflation costs. Our workforce continues to be our priority. It's where the focus is in this budget. Majority of our increases that you see in this budget is coming from the, our workforce. I, I actually put a little different than we've done in the past, but I wanted to show some categories for you so you could see where, where are the drivers within this budget? And so, so workforce is coming in at 73, of the increase, 73% of that increase is coming in at workforce. About 9% is coming in at operating, 8% is county taxes, 4% utilities. Our emergency reserve, Joe, every now and then will make that adjustment. We don't make that adjustment every year as long as we're within a parameter, but we have not made any adjustments in that in the last few years. So this year we made that adjustment to ensure that our emergency reserve met our percentage change. General assistance, I'll get into that a little bit more, but that was, you know, that's our 2% increase. Not a big increased swing in intergovernmental. We'll break down a few of those. And then our debt service went down and that's because of what we bonded. You know, we never know sometimes until Joe works through to see what our bond rating is, to see what, what will be expected within our debt service. So that actually decreased this past, for this budget year. So we're paying, so the debt, the debt service that you're seeing now is not the debt service for the CIP that we're proposing in FY '24. That's actually the debt service for FY '23. So we're always a little behind when it comes to what, when we're paying our debt service. In this budget, you know, what's, what's removed out of this budget over last year, I think the biggest item is the 12 positions that we reduced. So as I have talked about that in the past, these are not, currently there are no people assigned to these positions. We had started seeing the writing on the wall on this back in October, November, where we were seeing our budget numbers, where we were seeing some of our contract negotiations. So I had started working with the directors to go ahead and, and freeze those positions in anticipation of, of, of our budget proposal. So those 12 positions is what, what you're not seeing in here. Without tho, if those 12 positions were in here, your tax levy would have increased by about 7.3%. So, so that demonstrates where that savings, majority of that savings came from. If you look at our five-year fiscal trends, we continue to try to control costs for our taxpayers. That's been our focus in preparing the budget. It's hard to look at each of these fiscal years and try to compare each one to the previous year because there's been market adjustments that have taken place. That market adjustment last year really shifted what our property valuation numbers were. So it's hard to be able to do that, but I've tried to capture where, if you were just to take a look at our increases, what, what is that trending out over the last five years? It's about 1.6% per year for five years. As I mentioned before, this isn't the budget that our directors had hoped for. If you take a look at the department requests, including those 12 positions, the total, total increase that was being proposed was around $4.2 million. So Brian and I and the finance director, working with the directors, we were able to reduce about $1.7 billion out of that to try to work that number down to where we felt was reasonable moving forward. It's not that any of their, none of their requests were, there was no added positions in those requests. There wasn't any, there was nothing extra in there. So when we're, we reduced that 1.7, it's those 12 positions that we remove out, but it's also a lot of overtime costs have been removed as well as some of our operating costs. Hitting those line items, I've had conversations with the directors. It's going to be a difficult year for them to hit these line items. It's not, this isn't going to be an easy budget for them to, to be able to sail through this fiscal year and be able to say, yeah, we, we, we're coming out in the black throughout the entire budget year. It's going to be a challenge. They'll be, they will need to make adjustments with other line items throughout the budget, depending on, we have all kinds of variables. Vacancies, which we're constantly being faced with right now is vacancies. Our turnover is high, just like any other work environment currently. We have rising costs when it comes to salt, for example. You know, we're constantly watching that. Our solid waste, we're in a contract now right now, but we're looking at what, what are our recycling costs? And how are we chasing that? Those are, those are numbers that move for us, especially our recycling costs. And I'll get into those a little bit in a, in a few minutes. And then, and then our overtime costs. When it comes to those vacancies, we can say, yeah, we're down vacancies, but usually for most departments, those vacancies are driving overtime. We have minimum staffing levels that we need to hit. You know, those will be some hard decisions that we'll be making throughout this fiscal year. When those vacancies happen, we believe they will. And we're starting to take a look at overtime. We see that growing demand on overtime. How do we balance that out? Well, does that mean that our minimum staffing, what do we do with that? How's it look for staffing per apparatus within fire? How does it look for our plow routes in the, in the wintertime? What projects might we need to back off from? Because we just don't have the staff to be able to, to execute it. So those will be the difficult things that we're going to look at. And I, and I believe they're going to be able, they're going to need to make some adjustments to hold the bottom line. We also might need to come to you. We, we, I talked about the emergency fund. We might need to come back before the council midstream and say, look, based on the winter, based on whatever some of these driving needs are, we might need to come back and say, this is why you have an emergency fund. There is an emergency and we need to draw from it, and this is why. And so those are things I, I've, in the last couple of years, I haven't been concerned with. I felt like we, we can make it work within our budget, but this is the year where it's going to be tight. And it'll be important for everyone to be able to monitor this. We're making some adjustments within our staffing to really do that. Really be able to focus on monitoring this budget and, and be able to ensure that, that we're, we're constantly watching what's trending and what's changing. One thing that I, I believe that we need to do, and if you go back, I think two years ago, when I first came in as city manager, I talked about rightsizing the organization. I think that's still a priority that we need to work on. We've been making some adjustments. We've been making some shifts. But what I will be proposing and it's in my budget message is that we allocate a one-time expenditure from ARPA for a third-party analysis on our, on our workforce needs. I, I think that's going to be important. It's going to be important to tie that workforce needs to the work volume and the, and the priorities of the work that you're hoping to get done. So when we say these 12 positions, say, we're removing these 12 positions. As many of you know, most of the time, it's just you do more with less. You make adjustments, you try to keep the staff going. You try to balance out and still continue to carry out that level of service that we've been providing. Eventually you can't do that. Eventually you got to say, okay, what services do we need to evaluate and say, either we eliminate this service, either we contract out this service, or we staff up to be able to make sure we're hitting that, that service need. That's what I'm looking for in analysis. And so, so I'll be coming before you. I'm going to be getting some estimates. Brian has been talking with some other municipalities that have done studies similar to this. And we're going to come before you and, and make a suggestion. I think it'll be helpful for FY '25 to, for us to really get a good sense of where we are as a city and what do we believe is important for us to hang on to for services and what are those cost impacts? So I think where I'd like you to spend some time is under the department master list. That might be a good area to, to look at. And I'll start right off with page 15 in your books. Yeah, page 15. Brian, I'm going to let you kind of just try to fix that. It's all flipped upside down. Really, the only thing I want to highlight here is our general assistance. General assistance, you're seeing an increase there. What I want to ensure that you are aware of is that that increase doesn't cover all the need. It doesn't even come close to covering all the need. Well, when we look at making these increases, and a lot of these, this has to do with the increases as it pertains to housing. Let me pull that page. You see rent is, is the increase at $50,000 on rent under GA. Yeah. Yeah, that's, so we, we could easily probably go 10 times the amount that's in there, but we don't have the housing available to be able to make that work. So that's why we try to balance out. Where do we believe there is for open, open rents? Where can we place people? We're not going to put a money and an amount in there that we're not going to actually be able to place somebody into housing. So that's why that number, you're, you might be looking at and saying, well, why aren't we increasing that to meet all the needs that we have? Because the housing isn't there to meet it. So, so a lot of this is, is about balancing that. What you're seeing about a $60,000, almost $61,000 increase in general assistance. The next one I want to bring your attention to is on page 17. One thing we've been working on with information technology is software licensing has been spread out through many different departments. They each have their own, they may have had a line item with licensing they were paying for. We're consolidating that. This is all about bringing this right in under IT. That way their IT knows when updates need to be made on these licenses. They know when, they know if they're being used, right? Sometimes you could have changeover within department. There could be a system that we might have brought in. That department changes and then actually, you know, we've got a, a module that's not even being used. And so IT can monitor that. They can take a look at who's using it. So this is all about making sure we're bringing in. Plus there's an increase in some of our user licenses. We've increasing some, increasing some of our user licenses, and that's where some of that increase is coming at. And I'll have department directors ready to come before you if you have follow-up questions regarding some of these. Next one is regarding page 19. The only thing I want to bring to your attention here, and Jill and I just talked about this, we're going to give you a new page 19 for your budget books. We'll update this one. There's a column you don't see here, and that's a department manager request. That amount is, should actually be for the total increase. It should be 110,000. The, the proposed amount's the same. It's just that, that line item is, is, it's pulling from a wrong column. So, so it should be 110,000, so. Instead of the 220. 222, yeah. So we'll get you a new sheet for that. Page 20. I'm sorry? 110, 779. Your total remains the same. Nothing's going to change with your totals as it pertains to the mill rate, all those things. All that's calculated in. It's just that one column is where it was just reading it wrong. Yep. Page 20, under fringe benefits. Talked about workforce as we've made market adjustments, have increases have taken place. That's going to drive some of your fringe numbers. We were able to keep health insurance at 3%. And so, so we feel really good with that. I think our wellness team does a good job. We have different programs we have in place. And so those are, those are good numbers because we started, right after COVID, we started seeing an uptick because people started going back to getting appointments and surgeries and all those things were scheduled back in. So we saw a bit of an uptick, but to be able to hold it at 3%, we feel good with that number. And then some of your, your other retirement, those change and adjust on what the municipality has to contribute or because of the, some of the market adjustments we've done on wages, then our contribution, if it's at 8% or 11%, that's going to adjust those numbers. So that's why you're seeing the increase there. Staying on page 20, under fire. Really the big shift here that you're seeing with fire, two things. One that you don't see and one that you do see. One that you, you see is the reduction of those four positions, firefighter positions. That's in that regular sali line item. Those are removed. What you don't see is the contributing increase that should be there regarding overtime. I've held the line on that. I know Chief Chase is concerned about those line items. That's one where we both have concerns over it, but it's one we're going to have to monitor and just determine what does that staffing look like? We're, we're doing a few things when it comes to fire, where you're seeing an increase. Some of these things are as a result of a change in the contract regarding, if you're on an ambulance, your pay has been adjusted so that when you're on an ambulance, you're actually being compensated more to be on that ambulance. But we're also looking to, because of our numbers when it comes to EMS, that's where a lot of our driving numbers are at. We are looking at introducing a third ambulance. And what does that look like for the third ambulance to help offset some of that call volume? So, and again, those are things that the directors can, can speak more to if you have more questions regarding that. On page 24, under public works. Again, this is the reduction of, of four, four staff members under PW. And then you're going to see a lot of adjustments within the various line items taking from here, adding to another one. This was all about just trying to hold the line within this budget. And so those are the adjustments that you see within PW. PD, I'm sorry, I jumped over PD. PD, really the only change was on, was, is regarding the four positions from police as well. So you have four from police, four from fire, four from public works. Those are the 12 positions that were reduced. And again, line items, I would say, Chief won't probably say, tell you the same thing regarding overtime. There's, when you've made these market adjustments on salaries and we're not making those same market adjustments on overtime, you're going to see the difference on those. And so it's ones that I, I know we're going into it with that, and it's one we're going to have to monitor. Page 26, under transit. This is under your inter-local. I'll talk a little bit about inter-local while I'm here on page 26. You'll see that inter-local really doesn't have a lot of changes. The, you know, water and sewer, the, the rates stayed the same. Tax sharing, the tax sharing is scheduled to end in FY '29, I believe it is. FY '29, the agreement with the city of Lewiston will end. That means that $260,000 for tax sharing will end. That has to do with the airport and the municipal park at the airport. That, that agreement was signed. I was a kid playing Little League over there at the time, probably when it was signed. So, so that's how long ago it was. But, so it's been a long time, but that, that is coming to an end in FY '29. But it's still, that's still there currently. The, the airport, I'm going to have Jonathan speak to the airport when he comes back a little later. We've got some needs over at the airport that we'll talk about regarding some capital, but their operating budget right now is at least flat. LA Transit, the reduction that you see here of the 31,000, that's as a result of, there was some leftover cares money that we didn't apply to this year. So where I'm applying that is for our upcoming fiscal year to bring that, that down. So we had already budgeted, we already planned on the amount that's, that's in there for FY '23. I kept that the same, and then we'll see the, the reduction in FY '24. LA 911, this is a 6% increase. They are, they are, 911 is, is struggling with staffing, just like, you know, all the other departments. We're running a very lean crew over there currently because of staffing issues. So I think they've done a good job of trying to hold the line right here. They'll need to make some market adjustments within their staffing as well, and so we'll see more to that. And then LA Arts, Art in the Park. This is just a line item that started off as LA Arts. We had 30,000 there last year. They requested the same amount this year. What I'm proposing is, is 10,000 for LA Arts and 10,000 towards our, our events that we're hosting as well for some of the art pieces that, that are tied into our events. So a 20,000 total with $10,000 reduction. And then page 27, again, looking at inter-local agreements. The county tax this year increased by 8%. I have a lot of concerns with the county tax. I serve on the budget committee as well as Counselor Walker. Did you, you got one more? You came off, so Counselor Milks. So there's a lot of one-time increases that are in that budget based on their ARPA funding. That, those upper funds are going to be going away in their staff positions that are tied to that. So moving forward next year, and when I say next year for county tax, we'll start our county budget meetings in September. And so they're on a, they're on a calendar year. But I really have a lot of concerns with what county budget's going to look like next year. So we, we factored in what it'll be this year. This is the amount that we've already paid them in January, probably. We're all, well, we offset that every six months, but because we, we get the amount from the previous year to this year. But this one's concerning. Right now it's at eight, but I anticipate next year, depending on where the county budget committee will stand on this, but I'm anticipating that'll be, that'll be a lot higher next year. Solid waste, we'll have Dan talk a little bit about this as well because I know some of you had some questions regarding our solid waste disposal collection, our agreement that we have with Casella. If you've been reading in the newspaper, other municipalities, Casella is requiring all municipalities that they contract, contract with to go to bins. So every community will have a bin, that's a standard bin that their, their trucks will be able to just pick up without having a person do that. It'll be all automated. There's a big cost to that. Dan was able to work with Casella because we're off-year when it comes to our contract with them into a fiscal year. So we thought we were going to need to make those, that increase of those purchases or a decision anyway by you counsel on how would you like the community, the residents to receive a bin? Either that means we're paying for that or what that looks like. But, you know, that's about a million dollars to provide bins for the entire community. And that's for a recycle bin and a, a waste, a solid waste bin. So Dan was able to work with them. We were able to get through this entire budget year without those bins, but it'll be needed next year. So, so that's something we're going to need to, to take a look at. I mentioned earlier about recycling costs disposals. I know a few of you had asked some questions regarding that, so prior to tonight. So I just want to make sure you know where we're at. At the beginning of the year, we started recycling costs at about $34 a ton. We're currently paying $139 a ton. If you take a look at our average, we're averaging, so that number can fluctuate. We kind of see where the market is. That's, it all has to do with the market. Where can you take your recycling and who's buying it? If you take a look at the past year, it's about 50 follow-up, $54 more than our solid waste per ton is what we're paying for our recycling. So those are just some preliminary numbers for you to know where we are with some of our recycling costs. So those are the highlights that I wanted to provide to you regarding our operating budget. We can answer questions on this and then go into CIP. Or if you're, got a question regarding a department director, we have that director here and you've got a question regarding CIP, then I would say, let's go ahead and have him answer that, him or her answer that question at the same time. Does that sound good? All right. All right. And we'll go ahead with any questions you have, any department you want to see.
I don't mind starting off. Yeah, so when I'm looking at this budget, the, the one thing that I see is that the, right early on, you're, you're outlining that most of the expenses for the city are, are salary and fringe. So it's 48% and operating is 42. When I drive, when I look through these department master lists, so I figure when people are going to ask me questions about the budget, it's mostly going to be salaries. It's just the way that they always end up being that way. So I'm looking through here and I'm seeing salaries like increasing lots of different percentages. A lot of them are around 10. I, I don't particularly care about individual salaries, but one thing that would really help me would be to see a headcount from previous year and a headcount proposed for this year. Just so I can see was there, you know, are, are we, are we losing? this year, just so I can see was there, you know, are we losing some people? Are we adding some people? What does that number look like? And then if somebody, if somebody, I think last year you had the case where some people were moving from one department to another. If that kind of thing is happening, it kind of just paints a picture and gives a little bit more context to what's going on. And then in general, you know, if we're, if we're just talking about a contract negotiation that increased salaries, I mean, I think we know what those are. But, you know, just on the first page, I see, you know, 13%, 14% increase. I mean, just a little bit of context as to what's driving that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, those are great questions. I think you're absolutely right. From last year to this year as well, we are shifting people within departments. So you're going to see within the City Manager's Office, we created the Administration Services kind of function that's taking three positions that were in other departments. We're still expanding on that some. We'll make some more adjustments on that. But that is, that's where you're seeing three positions there that weren't there last, last year. So the headcount, we can definitely do. I think that makes good sense, and we'll talk about where some of the shifts. I'll put that in a, what I'm hoping to do is I'll, I'll capture everything that's everyone's asking, and you'll see that in a memo with some attachments to it, so you'll have some of those breakdowns. Positions, same headcount. Some of it might have shifted with, you know, I know there's a couple of positions at REC that might have been at 20, 25 hours, that might be at 35 hours now, just because some of the workload. And then, and then some of the positions, we had two positions within ARPA from the previous year that we're phasing in. So those positions are phasing. You're seeing more of them in the budget this year. And, but other than that, no other position headcounts, other than within CDBG. So CDBG has increases, but those are based on grants that they had received funding for. But as far as new positions in the budget, there aren't any. So, yeah. But great questions. I'll provide that. I, you know, Brian and I were just working on doing, what you'll probably end up seeing is an org chart from every department with the staffing. For the larger departments, it'll be like a number. Some of the smaller ones, you might actually see the titles, but just rather than trying to break out all the names within PW or something like that. But yeah, so we are, we are working through that. I think that might be helpful for you as well.
Software licensing again? I know you mentioned that. Can you, can you?
Yeah, I'll ask Jill to come up, and she can certainly speak to some of it. I think there's a few moving pieces there. One might be some added software that we might have shifted from another department, but then the other piece is regarding user licenses, right? It should be on Jill, so you should just be able to talk on that one. Push it one more time. Well, maybe I was wrong. IT told me. I don't know. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm just reading the tag.
He might have told me wrong. Oh, I might have heard him wrong, I should say.
So we're looking to consolidate all of the licensing, like we had different softwares over in Fire and Police that were paid by those departments that are now going to be paid by ours. Plus, we are at the end of our term for Microsoft, so we had a 10% or 10 to 15% increase for our Microsoft licensing. So that was a big part of that increase in addition to adding another department. So Public Works is currently not on the email system, isn't able to get some of the policies pushed out electronically. So the best way to do that is put it on our system. It'll have the best security for that team so they can be added on this year. So that's why we have an increase for licensing so much higher than normal.
So it added Public Works?
To the email system, yeah.
So they didn't have a?
Only a handful of people.
Correct.
An 100%?
An email account.
365?
Right.
Correct.
What, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, what Jill did was with regards to the level of license, licensing, I believe we had the Level 3 licenses for Public Works, so they don't have all of the suite of applications that the director, deputy director may have, but really allowing them to make sure that they had ability to sign off on things, that were able to email the pay stubs and those types of things to a city account rather than a personal account. So it's able to help for those types of things without paying for the premium.
And it gives them a single sign-on for their user account through UNS for their pay stubs. It just gives us better security for them logging in and easier for our team to manage.
Okay. Is that a one-time increase?
Well, their account will have, so that will be ongoing. So we pay per month.
So the new one going forward is going to be 460?
Yeah.
Are we going to start seeing things dropping off on the others?
No.
If anything, I mean, that'll probably still increase, because all these software companies are all, they all have an added amount.
We've been, we've been doing software improvements in the REC department, and we've been doing these, you know, software improvements over the last couple of budgets internally. And I would think we would start seeing some, recovering some efficiencies and eliminating some older.
Efficiencies in the way that we're providing the service more, you know, I think about intergov is being replaced, so that's our planning, licensing, permitting, software. You'll start seeing better access for the public on that. However, what we do, a lot of times when we buy some of these systems, is we'll build the first year or two of licensing into the purchase, and then eventually those get into the operating. So, so I don't want you to think that we're not going to see those. Those are going to come, because we might have purchased them, I don't know on all of them, but we might have, we might have been able to do a one-year, two-year in the agreement, but then eventually we're going to have to pay for that.
And we're purchasing everything as software as a service, so we're not purchasing more servers, we're not doing all of that. So, yeah, so everything's going to be as expensive as it is or more every year.
Do you have somebody that hosts it for us, or do we host all that? So in other words, we don't have a third party that's selling it to us? Or are we buying it direct from Microsoft?
Direct from Microsoft.
Thanks for coming, Mayor. I did let everybody know where you were, so I did. I did send the notes. Go ahead, Ryan.
Does that also include anything for cybersecurity?
Does that licensing? Yes. We pay an annual cybersecurity to Tyler Detect. So we pay for them to monitor, and they scan our systems, plus we do annual audits, annual testing, internal, external testing, and do all of that. So that's all included in it.
Thank you.
Tyler Detect is not just for the Tyler system, it's for the entire, the entire software and.
It's for our entire network, correct. Yeah.
Centerline striping.
Hold on. Any more questions on Jill? I don't think Jill wants to answer those questions. All right, Dennis, I think that's your cue.
You know, I can, I can understand that the price of paint is probably going up. The piece that I can't understand, especially in the city of Auburn, about halfway through the summer, our striping either gets done or it's already pretty much gone off the asphalt. Now, when we drive around the city like right now, there's probably no showing of crosswalks, especially. I would guess that money probably comes out of the centerline striping money.
Correct. That money does come out of there. And part of what you're experiencing, what you're seeing, certainly last year especially, we experienced, like every other product, it seems like, either a shortage in paint or a shortage in the glass beads that goes in the paint in order for them to put it down. It's just one or the other. The poor contractors were chasing those products left and right, and in fact, if it wasn't for some of our contacts, we wouldn't even have gotten paint. Our deputy director was able to secure some paint. But again, the glass beads, like I said, as soon as we got that, the glass beads became the shortage. So last year was a very bad year in particular about how you saw that consistency across the city.
Are we buying good paint? Are we buying the worst paint on the market? Because this doesn't last two months on the roads.
We buy the very best paint we can. It comes from Sherman, Sherwin-Williams. Not sure there is any better paint that we can provide. Again, it's, it is something that has to be continued to be reapplied. We do it in the spring as well as in the fall. We try to get the crosswalks right before school, so that way those are looking good and nice and bright right before, you know, kids start to use them, mainly at the start of the school year.
There is a paint that does last longer. The state tends to use it on the turnpike and some of this 295. It costs about three times as much money, and it lasts, they say it averages about twice the life expectancy. So it's like three times the price for two times the wear.
I can, again, I have a hard time, there's a lot of things in here that I'd like to cut and say buy the best paint. And the reason why is when you come to Minot Avenue, Minot Avenue was a bad scene that we just had happen, and you look at that crosswalk, there's no way in the world you can know that there's a crosswalk this time of the year, and I, I believe that was part of what happened with that accident. I don't think we can afford to continue not to use better paint or to paint twice a year somehow, if that's going to be what, what it takes. Somebody's life is definitely worth more than $600,000. And if it isn't, then boy, oh, boy, I should have been dead a long time ago, I think. But I, I just can't believe, I can't believe that, that we should be using this type of paint if it's not going to stand up in the city of Auburn. We should be giving somebody the opportunity to either vote it down or vote it up. So I would like to see something within our city that says these areas should have better paint to make it last longer than what we're seeing on an overall cost for our city. And I do understand prices go up and I, you know, I can understand you need another 44, because I don't think you've stretched the lines too much further, so it's just the cost of the paint. But I would like us to look at, is there better places that we should put better paint that's maybe a little more important than some of these outlined areas? And I don't know where all of that is, but I'm sure you do or your people do.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Dennis and his team look at priorities when it comes to which intersections need to be applied first, as we talked about school crossings. I think it's really important, we should not be tying an active accident scene crash with faulty crosswalk. There's the investigation, let that play itself out. I understand what you're saying, Counsel Walker, but I believe you'll find that, that's, that crosswalk wasn't included. But I understand it was in the general area. I just want to make sure we're being very mindful of that. So yeah, we can, we can work some of that up. We can take a look at it if there's some interest around the room for us to do that. We can run some preliminary numbers, determine, okay, if we were to do the higher grade. Some of it has to do with what we're applying, right? What we're putting on the pavement when it comes through the winter season has an impact on, on that paint as well. I think part of this also is that, you know, we used to have a crew within Public Works that did all of our striping, right? When we had our crew, that was a higher cost, but they got to the areas, they did, they updated, they, they were focused on, hey, that one's looking worn, the crew went out, they, they went ahead and updated. So even though there was similar wearing of that, even though I think the product has gotten worse, they were on top of it. Where right now, we go out to bid and we wait for a contract, and then we're at the whim of whoever got the bid on when they come in and when is Auburn scheduled. There's not many companies out there doing this. And so, so that's the, that's a trade-off by not having it done in-house. I think when we're having it done in-house, we had a better, we had a much better service. Our crosswalks were done on time. If there was an issue, we got it, we got it taken care of. We don't have that now.
Quick question. Do we, are we still required to paint the crosswalk lines if there's an electronic device there?
Yes, we, yes, we are.
Thank you.
So as long as Dennis is up here, looking at the, looking at all the different department budgets, I would say Public Works has probably got the most line items. And, you know, for good, for good cause here, I mean, there's a lot of important stuff here. I wonder, when you, when you go through a year and you say, hey, look, this line item is trending high or trending low, are you able to, to move money from maybe one of the other line items into, into one that you need money for without having some kind of an action?
Yeah, yeah. All the departments do that. They'll monitor them, they'll make the adjustments, they'll call Jill, and they'll say, hey, this is what I'm doing here, because she's monitoring those line items as well. But yeah, absolutely.
I had a couple of questions. One was on dues and subscriptions, and I know you need to pay dues and subscriptions for just employee benefit to be on top of stuff, but it was a pretty big increase. And the other was on crack ceiling. And we didn't do it this year, we did it in 2022, but I don't know what the thoughts are on that.
So crack ceiling's an engineering answer. And I guess dues and subscriptions, you're right, that there is a lot that we do pay for to keep our, our staff and organizations. The other thing that's in there is we do have some fleet diagnostic memberships that we are required, that's be able to look at the computer in the, in the trucks and that, be able to tell what's going on. So that's, that's one of the big ones.
Yeah, that's something you, we didn't have before. So having that now certainly helps our mechanics with diagnosing early, figuring it out, getting it back, getting the apparatus back on the road.
So the crack ceiling, we don't get, it's not an attractive amount that we get allocated every year? So we can only, the, I think we got $10,000 last year and $10,000 this year. $20,000, we can get someone to actually bid on it. At $10,000, we can't get a contractor to show up. So that's why it lags a year.
In other words, you need an impactful amount to even attract, you know, bids. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're seeing that struggle. I mean, Dan will tell you, on bids on a lot of projects, there's, we used to have some smaller projects that, there were certain contractors that that's, that was kind of their, their niche, right? That's where the size projects that they had. But now they've been, they've been bought by other companies. And so now, to try to get one of the larger companies to bid on some of these smaller projects, we're seeing an increase in, and, on these bids coming back. And so, and we're seeing that with a lot of different things, not just with, with road repair as well, but.
I guess my last thing is electricity. The, again, I know prices have gone up a lot, but I think we need to find a way in Public Works to be able to cut that back some. And I don't have the answers to do it, but I'm sure that you can figure out something. $36,000 is quite an increase in one year.
One thing that we don't.
The reason that number, I can speak to that a little bit. That number is so much higher is because last year we allocated more of our benefit from our, our contracts with our hydro plant and our, well, it was supposed to be solar, but never came on board, so now that money's been, that contract has been changed to another solar company. But we get a credit from the, we have a contract with the hydro dam on the Little Andrews Coggin, and that money, Public Works used to get a big chunk of it, and Norway got a big chunk of it, and now we're spreading it out among other departments. That's why that number goes up so much. It's not that Public Works electricity went up, it's just that they're not getting, they're not getting all the benefit that, from that hydro plant. It's being spread through other departments throughout the city.
It was quite some time ago, but we can, Dan and Derek, I think, provided you with kind of a list of where some of those renewable energy credits are being applied. We talked a lot about it, Norway, I think, when they presented it. So it is just a balancing, so, but we can, we can, we can resurface that memo and provide that to you, so you could see where we, we are seeing a lot of savings when it comes to our, our energy. I mean, it's, even though you're seeing this hit here, overall, we have a huge reduction in our, in our energy bill as a result of those renewable energies.
I know all the departments are working hard to try to keep the budget low. In previous years, deal, dealing with bonding, when prices were low, we were told, oh, now's the time that we need to bond because the prices will go up. So we ordered, I mean, allowed the departments to order more things. Now, from what we were told the other week, the bonding prices has gone up. If it's more expensive to bond, then why are we bonding so much right now? Do we actually need all the big Tonker toys that Public Works uses to keep our roads together in all forms of weather? Same with the police department. Do we need all the Cruises that they've got in the budget right now? Those two departments seem to have the biggest hit of an increase on what they would like to have in. Those two departments seem to have the biggest hit of an increase on what they would like to have and due to vehicles.
Do we want to finish operating and then we'll go into capital? Okay. I think what you're referring to is all capital items. And then we can talk about whether or not you want to see any of that shift over to operating if you want to, but I think that's right now, I think those are the areas that it seems to, I would recommend that they remain.
And then finally, piggybacking on what Council Walker said about, you know, making sure crosswalks and things. I'm getting a lot of calls about Elm Street and the non-visible lines. I mean, they tried very carefully to try to go up and then all of a sudden, whoa, wait a minute, I'm in the opposite lane. And when are we going to see our residents and visitors see some sort of relief?
Yeah, we've been, you know, speaking, uh, as we said earlier about the contractors, we've got contractors right now telling us at best it would be probably the second week of May is what they're looking at being able to weather and, and their schedule and everything getting up here. But it, next few weeks is what we're hope to be able to address that.
Thank you and thank you kindly and your staff for all that they do.
You know, if I could, you know, this is sixth budget, I think now. And there's always, you know, during those budgetary processes, again, I apologize for missing the first 30 minutes of the meeting. So, but I had the railroad corporation board meeting. But when we look at the budget and, you know, we're elected to represent our constituencies. We're looking right now to 3.5% increase, uh, to the mill rate, to the tax levy. Increases the mill by access in here. I think some of the first questions we have to ask is from a top line and then work our way down. Is this acceptable in the grand scheme of things when you compare it with inflation, you compare it with our run rate, uh, budgetary increases over the last 10, 20 years? We know from a previous, uh, discussion, we're still, and we have been well under the rate of inflation for the past 20 years, I believe, when we did this, Jill. Yeah. I think that's, that showed that with Ken, uh, Karen and Joe's presentation, uh, just a couple of months ago. So I'd like to ask the council, how do you feel about overall budget and then work down in the line items? But if there's a huge discrepancy here, you know, if we want to be down X dollars and it's a significant number, then we have to start looking at those. We have to start looking at not just a general cut, but what do we want to live without? Cause I think that's where we're at. If I'm, all the conversations over the years and listening to Phil and city staff and department heads, we are at that austerity level. This is it. We've cut, we've made everybody unhappy. And sometimes our residents too, and we're getting used to it. What's next? And how do we prep for that? So I'll open it up. I mean, and you know, if there's a magic number that you need to be at, and say it, let's, and then let's work towards that goal and see if it's doable.
I know I've got a, my question is along that lines is I know what's, I can't find the fund balance in here. And where is it in? Okay.
So you see, you see the fund balance comes out in your audit report?
Okay. So I'm not losing my mind that it's not in here. Okay. But that's a budgetary item that we have in that.
We have in the revenue.
We pull from.
We pull from fund balance.
Right. But so I'd like to talk a little bit about the fund balance and where we sit. Because that's an error. It's really, I agree. I think budgetarily where we can go through and pull little things out and maybe we can knock it down a little bit. But if we want to address any sort of real tax relief, we probably have to look at the fund balance and and so, I mean, you can laugh, you can laugh, but that's.
Fund balance is for.
Well, the fund balance is the emergency.
No, it is not.
What's it for? So what is the fund balance for then? It's for, for balancing, we're taking it out of the budget to, today. So, and we have a, a fund balance. So I'd like to talk about the fund balance.
Sure. I'll let Jill answer first and I'll come back to it.
Where is it? And, and where, cause I know we're way more than we are.
You got your audit book last year that, so your fund balance is in your audit book. It's never in your budget.
Okay.
So, but, but I'll have Jill kind of talk about it and then we'll come back to that. So.
The fund balance is, is a, uh, like a savings account. For if for some reason we don't collect taxes on time, we have something to go back on. It's not really supposed to be used for one-time tax relief. Um, that's really not what it's for. You can bring it in and maybe choose to use it for a one-time purchase of some big capital item or something like that, but it really isn't intended to reduce the mill rate. A lot of towns use or cities use a portion of it. Um, we have a policy that says we have to be between this percent and this percent. And if we're over that percent, then definitely we should use that money to offset any increase rather than re-tax the taxpayers again. And we have done that this year. We actually increased that amount by.
Well, we, we, so what Jill proposed originally, I've increased to what was budgeted from last year. So I think Jill wanted to be around 500,000, 600,000, somewhere's in there. I went ahead and the manager's recommendation is the same as what was in there last year, which was a considerable increase over the previous year. Previous year, I think it was four, it might be in here, but it was, it was, it wasn't very much. Um, it was a little less than a half a million dollars anyway, I think. What Jill's referring to is those, those one-time offsets. That's really important because if you don't do that, so say, say we go ahead and bring up the fund balance from 1.5 and say you add another half a million to that and say it goes to 2 million, right? That means next year you have to make up that 2 million. You either can make it up and, and when I started the budget presentation, what I talked about was that I'm really concerned that we are right on the line on a lot of these line items. There's a lot of things that I, I did not budget that I can tell you that the department directors are anticipating. Hey, there's, we're, I'm having concerns about some of this overtime cost, all the things I talked about. So we have consistently been very good at the end of the year about coming in under budget. That helps with the fund balance. That goes into the fund balance, helps offset that fund balance. Or we might get a, a revenue that might come in and, and those things help contribute to that. If you, if you do a one-time, then that works out great because now it's one time. There's no need to try to make sure we're making up for it next year. If it's just a line item in the revenue account and it's not tied to a one-time item, then that means starting next year, we're starting in the hole by $2 million if it was to go up that, by that amount. So earlier when I talked about when, um, Jonathan comes and we talk about the airport, there are some one-time costs that I'm recommending. Uh, when he comes and we can speak to it, that are immediate airport needs. There's some projects there that have to be completed. There's some concerns there. It's about $140,000. Those are those one-time that I'm like, I think we should probably take a look at the fund balance and see how that impacts and for this one-time offset. So you're not going to see the amount in here. You, um, the other piece with the audit that I wanted to make sure I bring to your attention too, is that, that, that all has to be certified by the auditors for us to know exactly where we are. We can ballpark it. I think Jill, even though she didn't want to go up to the 1.5, she knew that we had, it, we will be fine within our percentages to go for the 1.5 that was proposed. But your actual certified amount does not come until the, the auditors are complete their work. Because there isn't, it's like we've seemed like we've talked about everything from crosswalk paint to everything else. There's an auditor crisis in the, in the state. So we, uh, our contract that we had, they had basically said, yeah, we're not going to do Auburn. They stepped away from our contract. Jill had to call them, work with them to come back. They were able to come back with a 30% increase in costs, somewhere's around there. But we were able to get them to come back to do our audit because we, we have to have an audit. But what that did was it now shifted us off our normal schedule. So I am, when are we expecting? Yeah. So we're hoping by, by June, we're going to see what that report is. So we can't give you the amount because it isn't certified yet. Yeah.
So that's what I thought it was.
Yeah.
And I, it's, it's an emergency fund. It's so in case we don't have revenue coming in, we have money to pay bills.
If we don't have the revenue that we budgeted coming in, absolutely. That's exactly what it's for.
It's cash sitting somewhere that in case we need it, we can get to it for specific reasons.
It has to be authorized by.
It has to be a certain percentages in certain percentage of our total budget.
It's a policy.
Bond council recommends it. We have it from 10 to 14, I believe is where we are now. So ours is the minimum amount is 10% of the budget and it's the expenditure portion of the budget. And the maximum that we should have is 14%. So it's, it's a little, it's between one month's worth of, and one and a half months.
So my, to finish my thought on that's so that I thought, it is what I thought it was. We just had a massive tax increase on our residential taxpayers this year by increasing the valuation. So if, if that's a super healthy and we can avoid raising our, our, our mill rate anymore because I'm thinking the way that the market's going, that we're not going to continue to have increased valuations. That's, I, I'm throwing that out there as.
Yeah. So.
Cause it's, if it's a one-time and that's.
So it really has to be a one-time. That's, that's what I'm recommending is we, we've matched what we did last year. So we're not needing to say next year, we need to come up with that extra 500, whatever it is. But if it's a one-time that's in this budget, you can say, okay, we're not going to need to purchase that again next year. Challenge with operating is most of this is all, it's just, it builds, it's annual. It just, you know, most of these line items, you don't see major shifts. Because they're not one-times. And so, so that's why it's really hard to find that in this budget. To be able to say that's that one time that we could go in and apply it. I really believe that, uh, when we talk about the airport, those are going to be one-times that I think will make sense. Old debt that's been outstanding that we've been carrying on our books to make sure that we offset that. Jill was able to look at that and say, okay, that makes sense because all the auditors keep saying is why is this, this old debt still sitting here? Well, that's something you can offset because it's, it's just being taken out in the bottom line once you balance out later. So. So those are the things that we should look at. Um, but I, I mean, I get where you're going. I just, you're going to get a lot of caution from Jill and I, only because next year you're starting at a much higher, um, ceiling.
I understand.
Yeah. Phil and Jill, could we do this for the whole council's knowledge and it's good review? Can we have a copy of the memo that we passed, memorandum of understanding, guidance? I think it was two to three years ago we passed a revised one? Could be wrong. Policy, policy. Thank you. Uh, the policy. So we have that. I do believe, and I need to get confirmation, that includes fund balances on the municipal and the school side not to exceed. I'd want to also say, I want to ask Pat, she might remember, but I don't want to put her on the spot. The school has around $6 million in their fund balance as well. So I want to make sure we have a kind of a, within a margin of error, not a accounting principles, okay, not GAAP, but an idea of what the combined fund balance is. I'd also like to see what our expenditures, excuse me, the contribution, uh, this fiscal year has been to the fund balance to date. Let's see how much we put in to compare that with what you're proposing to take out for next fiscal year. Um, that way we have a little bit more information so we can.
Are you talking about FY '23?
To date.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that.
You wouldn't have a run rate?
No.
Okay. Then let's go fiscal year '22. The most, most recent data you have. That's in the audit book, of course. Uh, let's pull that. You know, but I do, I do, yeah, we don't have it for this fiscal year, but I, I tell you, I, I'm pretty sure that you could figure out kind of what the contributions were in the first half of '23 roughly into the fund balance per se. I mean, that kind of runs off the financial report.
I know we, we added more in a couple of, a couple of years ago. We did more in.
You know, we have like in this year, if you look, there's a line item for emergency reserve to be added in. So every year we add in a certain percentage of our budget into that emergency reserve. What is it this year? 540? I think 540, so.
So, um, so you're not going to see anything for FY '23 because we're in FY '23. That's, none of that happens until books are closed and shifts are made as a result. Some, and sometimes we won't shift the full amount in, um, if, if there's nothing that we need to draw from within that. So, but FY '22, we can provide that number. Yeah. It's going to be the uncerti, it's going to be the non-certified number, but we can tell you where we're at on that. So, yeah.
Back to the question I think Steve was getting to, you know, from, we're looking at, and again, from a comparison standpoint, I can't find a single municipality, large or small, that has a lower tax increase than Auburn. And someone correct me if I'm wrong. In all the meetings that we all have with other municipal leaders, Phil, are we there? And I don't like the comparison, but is that a fair estimate?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think you're going to see most municipalities are five plus. Five, seven is where you're seeing, not to say that you're not going to find a smaller, smaller town that might see something, but, um, yeah, I think that's, that's what you're seeing.
I'm not suggesting we take money out of the fund balance at this point. I think it's important for us to know because I think we are looking at in the next couple of years, some really ugly situations. And I think we got to know what our reserves are and what's coming.
I think to take off on that too, we also need, again, just a trajectory of what new value growth is looking like over the next year, two, three years. Um, I know that's tricky. I know that's difficult at best, but we have approved lots of projects. We have the permits out there. We should be able to infer something, some sort of future revenue gain up until including, not just including property taxes too, but I believe there's probably an algorithm or a simple math formula that states that Stable Ridge, 120 units will have 1.1 car per unit with an average excise tax of $300, whatever the number is, um, that we can use to forecast some potential future revenue, which I think helps make our jobs a little bit, uh, easier and less stressful when we can actually project out for at least a limited amount of time.
Yeah. I think each one of those, uh, there, you know, each one of those, um, scenarios has a lot of other moving parts with variables. But I think that, uh, a lot of it has to do with the state and what the state dictates and, um, but you know, there, there's a bill right now that's looking at excise tax that could take and shift that all, uh, off so that anyone with a vehicle that's over a certain year, uh, the excise tax is just going to be a fixed amount rather than using what the, uh, the value of that vehicle was. It's, so, I mean, I wouldn't want to do the math on that, but it's, there's a lot of things that are shifting. And so, but I think, you know, we can, you know, we know how many vehicles we're bringing through. It's one where as much as Jill, I think, you know, those of you who've worked with Jill for a long time, Jill's very conservative and we appreciate that. It's, it's allowed the city to be healthy and in a very good place. And as much as she will go ahead and increase vehicle excise tax, it just seems like that's an area that we never seem to, uh, it just continues to grow. I mean, we have a lot of people buying a lot of vehicles and so boats and everything else. But we have seen where we normally would see those increases, we've seen it level out this year. Uh, for the first time in probably six, seven years. So that's, that's inflation finally catching up to where we are and, and eventually in Maine it happens. And so that's what we're seeing right now, um, is this leveling. So I'm, I'm glad we didn't increase as high as what I think. You know, I remember Peter and I having a conversation with Jill saying, hey, I think we can move that, move that needle some. I'm glad we didn't because we're actually seeing it pretty much level out right now. So.
One last question on, uh, the county tax.
Yeah.
Does, as we tiff, our exposure to county tax decreases, correct?
That's correct.
Again, operations wise, I'm going to, it's something I'm, I'm thinking about and, oh, I'm sorry. But going back to future meetings, you know, having as much of this data as possible would be helpful. I personally, just talking to constituents, looking at the overall inflationary numbers for the last year, I'd like to see our increase to the mill rate not exceed $23. In other words, I'd rather, or excuse me, yeah, 20, I'd rather us not pass that number. I'd like to keep it below that. Now, that's shaving 56 cents off, yeah, 56 cents off the mill rate. And I look at everything, mill rate, right? That's the, the, where the rubber meets the road. That's what people see on their tax bills. Thanks for turning that up. So getting that below, uh, $23 would mean shaving around 56 cents off the mill rate, which I think rough math is like 1.2 million. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know how you make that up, either through revenue or through cuts. Uh, but that's that tax break that you're talking about, Steve. Now, if you're going to do something like that, it's a combination of increased revenue and decreased tax, or excuse me, decreased expenditures. And I leave that up to you, then just kind of setting the discussion, okay? I'm not going to advocate for any one or the other or any one issue, um, or line item, but I want the council, I think the council needs to look at that and think about that. If that's even a relative, a valid goal, or considering inflation is what, 7.5% CPIU? We're at 3.5. That's pretty good. So I think that if the council can, you know, kind of talk about that a little bit and come up with some ideas on that, that would probably help us and guide us through the rest of the conversation. rest of the conversation.
Well, I think you can, you can always do better and, and just because we're doing better than most other cities doesn't mean we can't try and do better. I got advice back around two thousand, I forget, it was a recession in the early two thousands at the Housing Authority, uh, from Paul Anderson, who was the chairman at the time. He was, became president of Andersgård Savings and his advice, I thought, was good and I've used it ever since, which is on budgets that you, it's rare that you can make a big difference with big cuts or big savings. It's all a bunch of little ones. You have to look at everything and that's why I, I mean, I looked at, you know, dues and subscriptions, the software licensing, which the question was answered, um, events, you know, special events, that's up twenty thousand. I mean, you add all these little things together and you may be able to whittle it down some. I'm not sure we could get it to zero, but I think there are some places where if we really look hard and everybody looks and, you know, makes an effort, we might be able to knock a few, few line items down. But I don't think there's any, as Paul Anderson said, I don't think there's any big magic wand that you wave and have a huge, you know, epiphany in savings with one big idea. That's probably not going to happen.
Yeah, and I know, um, you know, we, we pay attention, even though, you know, Karen's giving me, Karen Skamen, our assessors, give me no numbers at this point, um, and I don't expect to see any and, you know, I'd love to get a ballpark at our next meeting and she and I'll have that conversation and Jill will run interference and, but we'll have a good conversation about it. But I think that, you know, without, you know, you know what goes on throughout the city. We see buildings that may have come down, new buildings go up and so, you know, I'd like to think that we're going to be around where we were not last year because it was a market adjustment, but go the previous year. And then we know we're going to see a bit of an adjustment regarding multi, um, multi, multi-units, right? So we know that there's going to be a, a bit of evaluation adjustments there. So, so we know we're going to see a decent amount when it comes to, um, our valuation shift and so that'll help the mill rate. We put it, we, uh, other communities do different things here. We, we put what we know the valuation to have been the previous year. That's the way Auburn has always done our budget. We don't anticipate because we do not want to come back and say, by the way, that budget you approved, um, yeah, it's going to have this kind of impact on your mill rate. Now, there's other communities that they'll, they'll talk about budget without ever talking about mill rate, only because you don't know what it is yet. And so, so they're just looking at the numbers and saying, is this a healthy budget? Does it make sense? We come somewhere in between. We, we put what we knew the, the valuation was, um, it build off that assessed value. But, you know, I think you could probably look at the assessed value and, and be anywhere as around fifteen million probably. And if that's, if you go back off two years ago, that's about where we were at and you could say, well, that's, that's a pretty conservative number, I think. And so then you could factor in what that, what that would look like. If, if you're driving a budget to get to the mill rate, right? And so that's that, two schools of thoughts on how you look at the budget. If you're looking at services being provided and you want to say, okay, we see the services that are being provided, this is the services that we want to be able to continue providing, then if you're using though that lens to look at this budget, then this is the budget you move forward with. I mean, I think, uh, can we make, do a little adjustments here and there? Probably will they have a big impact? Like Rick said, only if it's a, if it's a lot of those little adjustments. But I, I really think to get, you know, if we're just looking at operating expenses for what the mayor just mentioned, you're looking at ten positions. There's no, there's no other way around that. That's, that's ten positions right off the top to get to that if you're only looking at the expense sides. I know, now, could you do some things with operating? Yes. Could you, could you look at transit? Could you look at, uh, recycling? Could you look at all the things that many of you have had conversations with me about leading into this budget? You could look at those things, but none of those things will get to the number that the mayor just mentioned on expense alone. And so that's where you gotta, you gotta weigh that out and say, okay, what's our level of service we want to provide? What's being driven? Because there's an expectation within the public that this certain level of service will be offered. And so, um, so now how do we balance that out? I, I, I truly think that, well, I know, I know that where Brian and I and Jill first sat looking at this, what we were going to be presenting to you was about a, a dollar fifty increase on the mill rate. That's where we were. And then we went back and we did the things that Rick mentioned. We went back and said, okay, let's make all these small little adjustments to see where we might be able to come in at this. And, and we made a lot of those. Fortunately, what we also, what also came out was, uh, the school department received some extra funding and that helped that bottom line as well. And so, um, and so those adjustments are why we're at the eighty-one cents as our assessed value currently sits, so.
Fifteen million in new value equates out to about three hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional revenue, just to put that into relative terms.
So are we on the budget or are we on the capital?
So if there's no more questions on budget, then we're ready to move to capital.
Can I just get a clarification on two things? We have under fringe benefits, salary reserves and cafeteria plan. Can you explain those to me?
Sure. So we do have, um, salary reserve is an amount that we use, especially when we're negotiating contracts. And so, and we know that we're, we're looking at some, this isn't just one collective bargaining, but we have non-union personnel and then we also have, uh, one of our collective bargaining units, plus we're looking at a potential adjustment with another unit. So we put those into salary reserves rather than negotiating with them in the exact amount. So that sets up cafeteria plan. So we have a flex benefit plan, uh, for our staff within all of our contracts. Uh, there's a certain dollar value that we contribute and then they have a matching amount. And so the city's contribution is that cafeteria plan amount. It varies within contracts. Some of them might be, um, four hundred and some might be seven hundred. Depends on what contract you're in.
No, those are monthly stipends?
No, no, that's annually.
Oh, annual.
That's just an annual amount. Yeah. No, no, no.
I'm in, sign me up.
Those are two of fun that they can draw.
So they can use that towards co-pays. Yeah, they have to do a matching amount into that, so, not a full matching, but they have to contribute a certain amount into those. But it depends on, there's six different contracts, so it really depends on which contract. But it ranges anywhere from four fifty to seven fifty, I think. So actually it might be one eight hundred, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, can we look at some numbers, not tonight, but, you know, before our next meeting about two things, actually? You read my mind. I want to look at, uh, what the cost savings and the cost differential is between recycling and just normal tonnage and sending to M WAC, um, as well as, you know, any type of emergency plan with transportation. We've done it before and then we raised it up, you know, to another fifty percent allocation or split in costs between Lewiston and Auburn for, I can't remember the exact usage, but it was well below fifty percent. So I'd like to look at what that, and I know that's third party, it's kind of intergovernmental and it's like the third rail, but I think it's, we, the taxpayers deserve us looking at both of those things.
Yeah, so, so we, we did, because a couple of you had reached out, I had, I had Dan run some numbers. So if, um, you know, there's not, there's not a huge savings with eliminating recycling, even though I think, Mary, before you came in, I was talking about where our tonnage rate is at. Um, and so when we started the year, it was thirty-four dollars a ton. We're currently a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a ton on recycling material. However, because of the way that our costs work on this and the thing to be that I'm going to recommend you be mindful of, you know, it's about, if you were to eliminate recycling, some of that now shifts to your solid waste collection and your solid waste, uh, just, um, uh, tipping fees. So, uh, the, if you were to eliminate it, it's only a twenty-seven thousand dollar savings. So, uh, that would be your net amount is what you would actually say because some of that's shifting over. And then, then it becomes, well, what does it look like moving forward? And if you bring it back, there's, so sometimes you're paying more, but you're at least maintaining some core components of recycling. So, uh, so there's two schools of that on that. We will be going out, uh, to bid, uh, before the next budget, correct, Dan?
It's next March, March eighth, I forget.
Okay. Yeah.
And then it's a discussion of what, we'll have an executive session with council and whether or not we're going to bid or what we're doing.
Yeah, because there's a lot of moving parts right now when it comes to solid waste. So, yeah.
Our biggest salary increases were the finance department, human resources, um, business and community development and, uh, a big, big one in planning and permitting, twenty-four percent. So, um.
Yeah.
You know, I'm looking at the public works. They, they were in line, the fire department, I mean, that's, all those are higher than.
So Counselor Staples had asked a similar question and I'll provide that for you. Those, those were actual shifting of, from other departments into those departments because we did some realignments. And so, so I'll provide that for you. HR, um, you might be just looking at a percentage increase, but, I mean, there's only three people in that department and so, um, there's not a big dollar number to that, um, but the percentage within the department might have shifted some. But we'll, we'll get you a per department breakdown on those.
Yeah. Planning, planning is a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Business and community development, sixty-one thousand. Human resources is tw, almost twenty-one thousand and the finance department is seventy-two thousand. Those are all big numbers. Those aren't small numbers.
Yeah, and those, um, yeah, we can, we can break, give you that breakdown, but we did shift, we shifted some people around in those, so.
Finance, we added, yeah, Sydney McNeil, who was in C D B G, um, to finance, a lot of her functionality aligned more with finance, so that's the big swing there. Um.
No, you, you just.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Uh, yeah, finance, uh, was a shift in personnel, um, one individual, HR, uh, twenty-one thousand. I have to dig into that. I'm pretty sure that was, uh, two years, no, one year's salary. We'll have to dig into that one specifically. What was the third, planning and permitting? Hmm? Planning and permitting.
Okay, so you work on some, some, give us some report on that?
Yeah, there was no, uh, there was no, um.
Because it's just.
No major adjustments. Some of them, sometimes if there was a contract that did not get negotiated last year, but it's negotiated this year, you're seeing last year's negotiation rate increase as well as this year. So that could be in some of those departments.
So if you could give us an explanation of that, that'd be great. I appreciate that.
Just to go back on the recycling costs, because I misread an email that Dan provided to me. It's a decent amount, so I want to make sure I make that clear. So we currently, we currently collect around five hundred tons of recycling a year, which in turn costs a city, using the hundred and forty-two dollars a ton for disposal, at seventy-one thousand dollars. To dispose of five hundred tons of trash, we would only pay forty-six dollars a ton, so a cost of twenty-three thousand dollars. That's where I came up with the twenty-three thousand, so my apologies. So there would be a savings of forty-eight thousand dollars in disposal costs and then the total savings would be that forty-eight thousand plus the hundred and eighty-nine thousand, so it would be a total of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for recycling. Big difference on there, so I want to make sure you have that. I'll make sure, I'll make sure we get you that memo, though, so you'll have it. Did you add, did you add that back in, though? So if, if, if somebody's not recycling, they're throwing it out? Correct. Okay. That's adding it back in. Yeah.
Question on, question on state law. I mean, isn't there some sort of mandate in terms of recycling now or is that?
No.
That's gone?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of communities have actually dropped their recycling. Some of it's because they have some contractors just not willing to.
Yeah. See, my, my thinking on, on, on recycling is that we should come up with a sort of a lower standard that's workable, where you know that it's saleable, stuff like cans, maybe? I don't even know if those are saleable, but, um, you know, the market's gone on a lot of the products, that's why we're paying so much.
Yeah, yeah, because we, you know, when glass is going in, we're now taking the glass and it's going to a landfill, we're paying a lot more for it at the landfill where if we had just collected in our solid waste, it would have been, it would have been a lot, the price would have been reduced.
The, um, old Ad Hoc Sustainability Natural Resource Board, before it's, it's current in a rotation, did a really nice study on this and Leroy is a wealth of information. I tell everybody, listen, I know there's no market for paper and pizza boxes, that's bad. That's, you know, never put a pizza box in, in the recycle. Put it in your trash. We burn it, we make electricity and M WAC get, uh, pays us in lieu of, substantial in lieu of three hundred thousand or something like that, right Leroy? And even metals, we recycle metals when it goes through the incinerator. It's cleaned, it's taken out and it's sold to a recycler. So that's a revenue stream for M WAC. I do think it's worth thinking about. I do remember, and I don't think it's changed, that our participation rate on, um, recycling was not high. I want to say it was sub ten percent of the population. And this argument came up three, four years ago. You know, again, Phil's point was really well made. If you get rid of it now, what happens if the market changes? Can you get back into it? But at the end of the day, people, the argument was emotional. It's like, oh, we, we need to keep recycling, even though we're not recycling. It's actually worse for the environment because it's being trucked all the way to Old Town or Orano, Juniper Bridge, I think it's called, someplace way up north versus being handled locally with a positive net environmental impact on one of the greatest facilities we have in the country, which is M WAC. So it's, I mean, I agree, Rick, you said earlier, big swings? Yeah, you're right. Good budget, you got to take the little stuff absolutely, but if there's a big swing out there and we have to make a hard decision, yeah, it, this is, it's there.
That's not just this year. It's every year after.
The, um, go back to salaries. Uh, what you're also seeing reflected in here is the shift from the thirty-seven and a half hour work week to forty. And so that's, that's a big shift that was not in the last year's budget, but we made the adjustment on July one, so that's where it is.
That's the non-union.
Yep. That's correct.
That's why those are all, those shift, yeah. All of those service oriented as opposed to our.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. Eric looked a little panicked back there when you mentioned planning.
What?
Eric looked a little panicked back there when you mentioned planning department. Yeah, so, so his, almost his whole department is all non-union, so that's why that was, and finance is the same way. So, so, yeah, so that was a big shift. But remember, we, we.
Sorry, Jill, sorry, Eric. Because I did the same, this look on Jill's face is probably just like the look on Eric's face when I brought up the fund balance.
So that shift, when we did thirty-seven and a half hours to forty hours, so if you recall, that was a big shift with the amount of FTEs. That was increasing our amount of FTEs by doing that, um, rather than having to hire any additional staff. So, yeah, good point. Thanks for bringing that up. All right, hearing nothing else on, we can shift to capital. All right. So in your books, it's page twenty-eight, um, the finance director did provide you a replacement sheet. Counselor Walker had done his homework and reviewed this pretty closely and noted an error. Two, two numbers were flipped for the, um, replacing of the, uh, the one-ton truck and the replacing of the front end loader. Those amounts were flipped. So the one-ton truck is two one-ton trucks that's at, uh, should have been at the hundred and fifty thousand and then the front end loader was at two hundred and fifty thousand. So, so those two line items are shifted. So when you did the math on one, one-ton truck at seventy-five thousand and doing two of them, it does not equal two fifty. So, so, but you've got the new shit, the new sheet on that, so.
A quick question.
Yep.
Are we talking about the Hasty Center for that logo?
We will, yeah.
That's the one there? I mean, is that something?
Well, that, that wasn't an error.
Are we talking about the list now?
So, we are talking about everything on this list.
So, that's one I wanted, uh, that logo, is that something we can use ARPA money for?
Um.
Is supposed to pay interest on it?
We can do some homework on that. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's one you want to, so every.
We're gonna refinish the basketball court.
Refinish it.
Right.
And so, this is the refinishing year, right Dan?
So it gets refinished every year. And this is to change the logo as they refinish it to the new rec logo versus the one that's in there now, which is the old. It's a pretty old one, I'm not sure when they did it, but.
But Dan, that's not the, the amount here isn't all for a logo.
No.
It includes all the lines, all the refinishing as well.
The normal refinishing that we do every year. Cause we, I think they refinish it every year, don't they? They should.
Yeah, I think we, sometimes we spot, because we had done it, we did a really, a full in-depth change of that floor, um, a few years ago. I want to say there was one year where we, there was just some small changes we needed to fix, we did that. Um, but by doing this one, we're also striping it out for pickleball, that's something that's being used there quite often.
So that's not the, the logo only, it's the whole process?
It's the whole thing.
The whole thing, yeah.
Phil, I, I'd like to just say, uh, instead of going through all different lines, I think you're probably smarter at this than I am, but I would like to see five-hundred thousand cut from that bonds. That's what, and I told you some of the things that I had questions about. But, uh, if people have got line item, they can bring it up to you, whatever.
Yeah.
But I'm looking at approximately five-hundred thousand, and I, I would be happy with it after that.
Okay.
And just remember that, obviously, this is gonna be in our May first agenda item, for the first reading, correct me if I'm wrong. So, we can make motions and everything, then, of course, to cut things. Um, and if it gets the support, it gets cut. And, you know, if there's anything else to look at moving into, let's say, ARPA funds, or even operating funds. Because what's the rate right now, the bond rate? Four-point-five interest? Big change from when they were paying us to take their money.
So just to help with what Councilor Walker suggested, I mean, is thirteen million more of the number you'd like to be at for capital? If it is, uh, I can work with staff and we can make those recommendations for your first reading.
Yeah, I'll start off, I mean, I don't know, I don't, with all due respect to Councilor Walker, it's, I don't like arbitrary cuts, but I understand where it's going. I think, you know, looking at it, what, it, does, is it needed? Is it not needed? You know, for example, I'll start this off. I don't think that we need to replace carpet in City Hall. That's fifty thousand dollars. Okay, kinda like our carpet. This one's a little well-worn, but that's a sign of.
Eighty-five.
Working, eighty-five? Oh, I have my glasses on. Thank you. Eighty-five thousand for carpet. You know, I'd like to look at that. Um, you know, I'm looking at, you know, police patrol rifle replacement. I do like the fact that we did break that up into two years. And I appreciate the, you know, police working on that. So I think that's something that years, for years, I've argued against patrol rifle replacement. But this was a good compromise that we did last year, so, you know, but I think that what jumps out at me is the eighty-five thousand on the carpet replacement as a starting point.
Yeah, and I, I'd hesitate to get into what some of the small towns do, which is try and find used equipment and that sort of thing. Cause you end up spending so much on labor and mechanics, repair costs, et cetera, that that's just not worth it.
Again, I, I think there's, there are probably ten different things that we could either cut in half, or in a quarter, or whatever. I think you, you asked the right question, is it thirteen we're looking at, or is it lower? If it's lower, then we probably need to talk more than just saying we're happy with being at thirteen. So, I think we answer that question first and then play around with what we want to cut after if we don't like thirteen.
I, I got a question. For instance, uh, we've got traffic calming pedestrian safety, two-hundred thousand. I know we have a full safety transportation evaluation on all of our roadways going on today, and looking to go get bond, uh, uh, grants and other things that, that Jonathan's working on. And is that something that we could roll into that? Is that, you know, theoretically, is that, you know, I'm not sure exactly what this is referring to. I don't want to, if it's, if it's in front of the Y, I don't want to eliminate that. But is it other stuff, like, is that something that would fall into the bigger picture that we want? You know, that's a question.
I don't know what that might lead us for.
Yeah. I think Jonathan, you can come up with it. Should be a seat over by Dan.
I'm not suggesting we make our roads less safe, but I'm wondering, is that something that can? Is it essential, and is it something that goes in with other, something else that we're doing?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes, similar to what the council, um, provided in this year's budget, um, which allowed us to do the neighborhood engagement along Court Street. Uh, identify areas where both speed was a concern of neighbors, um, even if PD's data suggested otherwise, but also where pedestrians felt less safe crossing the street, or we knew we had, um, crashes that, um, perhaps could be resolved with some improvements. Two-hundred thousand dollars does not go very far. Um, and with the strategic plan goals around, uh, around safety in walkable neighborhoods, uh, the vision with that proposal was, could we consistently be able to get on the ground with neighborhoods, um, and be able to have conversations with them about feedback for improvements, and use those to make incremental changes? They're not the kind of projects that Dan's department is doing a full redesign of a street. These are, can we do some enhanced crosswalks? Could we do something that might slow traffic down, um, at particular gateway areas? We do have the funding for, you mentioned Turner Street here near the Y. Um, we were successful, uh, receiving a grant for the intersection of Turner and Dennison Street. Um, and that's one of the areas, uh, the entire connection of Turner Street from Union out towards the retail area, where, you know, speed is a neighborhood concern, pedestrian crossings are a challenge. We were kind of identifying that. It's the Washburn and Powell neighborhood of, you know, and the next neighborhood where we might be able to get engaged on the ground, get feedback, and be able to show neighbors we can make incremental changes. So, there's not a specific project there, it's more, we can leverage that, we might be able to go to DOT and, you know, get some equipment or just some other partnerships with them as part of that.
Now that we, on that same one though, and I remember that I was at the Court Street resident meeting. We did talk about any type of, uh, development that's TIF'd. On Court Street, i.e. Stable Ridge, and some of, applying some of those tax dollars that are in that shelter TIF account to, um, pedestrian improvement down Court Street. How does that reflect? I mean, obviously, we don't have it yet, you know, so TIF was just approved. How would that, where are the mechanics of that inside the budget, I suppose?
So typically, what we've done in the past is Jill will, will show that as one of the CIP bonds, and the bond is actually paid with the TIF.
So instead of the debt service being in the general fund, it will be paid with TIF dollars.
So we don't have anything this year that is being paid for with TIF dollars?
Not anything new, no.
So theoretically, if we had a TIF on a development, we could take some of that money towards public, cause that's public safety. We're putting some of that towards public safety buildings, but that would fall into this line item as well? Out of a TIF theoretically?
It could, but, um, there's nothing that's been identified currently, other than, um, there's nothing that's being TIF now that a project has been, been identified and budgeted for to be constructed with those TIF dollars as of yet.
Is the group leaning towards what Councilor Walker is suggesting, or? Cause we can come forward with recommendations.
So, I don't, I don't think I would, I don't think I would go so far as to cut the two-hundred thousand dollars for pedestrian, uh, enhancements when we have four and a half million dollars for road reconstruction. I think we need to, we, we need to be a little bit more cognizant that there are more users to the road than just automobiles that are driving on them.
Yeah, so I wasn't suggesting that we would take from that. What I was suggesting with what Councilor Walker had suggested was, hey, there's about five-hundred thousand that we'd like to see out of this, this bond. And if you'd like to see that, we'll go through and say, okay, like the mayor said, maybe it's not the carpets. Maybe it's, maybe, um, we can take a look at some of our estimates for some of the replacements of some of the equipment, and, uh, see where they might be trending now compared to where they were when they did these in January, so.
I, I would just say that I didn't not hear from Jonathan that that particular budget item was for something specific for pedestrian safety, or anything, it was for an engagement process, as opposed to, it wasn't to eliminate crosswalks or build crosswalks. It was to talk to the community about it. So I just want to make sure that, I'm not being accused.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the road reconstruction projects, um, all, that, those involve enhanced crosswalks, all those types of features for all users. This two-hundred thousand dollars would be for a project that's outside of a road reconstruction project? So if there's a crosswalk that's identified somewhere else on a road that's not being rebuilt, that's not receiving any type of other attention, um, that this money would go towards that construction. As well as the public and civic engagement.
Yeah. And, and those come up. You know, I think, uh, I think Dennison is a good example, the Dennison project. I mean, I think, uh, Jonathan, if he didn't, he's, he's meeting with, uh, some school officials at Fairview, talking about the crosswalk there. Um, I think might have already had that. Uh, so he's having that on Wednesday. So those are those ones that do come up, we take a look and we evaluate. We do try to track down as much DOT funding that might be able to support and assist us in those, but, um, but there, it's a, it's, it's a full array of those types of projects.
Looking at, um, I'm glad you're here, uh, road reconstruction, we got one-point-five million dollars specifically slated, or at least in the description. Percy Hill Road, and North Auburn, Harman's Corner Road, South Witham Road to Pownell Road. I understand these roads are in pretty terrible condition, but I also recognize that the traffic count on these roads is absolutely low, low. And, you know, this is the rural agricultural areas of our city. And I've been to a lot of rural agricultural areas, and they're lucky if they do have tar. So, um, if you're gonna, if we're gonna find one-point-five million, you know, and I'm not saying cut it completely, reappropriate that. I'd rather see more in-town pedestrian improvements, um, more road reclamation in town. We've got some high-density, uh, neighborhoods that are in desperate need of reclamation. I'm sure there's a whole list. You know, like you said in the memo, we should be spending ten million dollars a year for the next ten years or something, that we're not, and we can't. But, I'd rather, I'd rather see these roads not get worked on.
Cause some of those roads, we're also not using that opportunity to replace sewer or water in those types of things, because there's no sewer water out there.
Yeah, these are all roads that don't receive the same type of treatment that in-town roads do. These are basically reclamation projects, so you go through a reclamer, maybe you add gravel, you replace the culverts, then you pave it. There's no box cuts, there's no, um, sewer, there's no water, there's no, the drain, the ditching is redone, but very little closed drainage. It's, it's as cheap as we can rebuild a road, essentially.
Yeah, I'd like to see some of this money reapplied to your ward specifically.
So, uh, I'm gonna make some people upset when I ask this question and make this statement, but why are we putting so much money into all of these trucks that just continue to tear up our roads, but we can't even afford to repave them?
You're talking about PW trucks?
Every time it, a plow truck goes by, you're gonna see the roads being ripped up over time. I know the traffic are on them as well, but these trucks with their plows, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys are the experts in this. It's gonna be tearing up the tar. Every time they go by and they're tearing it up, it puts, or takes money from the taxpayer to fill those holes. And half the time, we repave a road, and then we cut right back into it three months later for something else. So there's a lot of different things that are, that are happening, and we need to kind of look and dive into those.
I will say that the city is not cutting back into the road. We have a moratorium that we're very strict with here in Auburn. Um, there's a five-year moratorium on every street that we rebuild, including reclamation projects, where if a contractor or a utility wants to cut into that street, they have to do what we call a moratorium repair. It has to be an emergency, and they have to go twenty feet either side. There's, there's certain rules. It makes it very, um, expensive for anyone to cut into a road that was rebuilt, because we don't want exactly that same thing to happen, where someone rebuild, rebuild a road, and the next day, someone goes in and tears a hole in it, and then you have this nice bump that's there. As for the, if a road is being torn up by a plow, it's because the road's in bad condition. It's not a function of the plow doing damage that wouldn't occur if we didn't plow it. Um, if a roads, if a plow goes by and little chunks of pavement are coming up, it's cause the pavement's alligatored. And because of the frost heave in, in Auburn and throughout the Northeast, you have, especially in the spring, when you have a, a spring storm and the road is soft, because some thawing has taken place. There's a lot of pumping in the pavement, and the pavement becomes loose, and the plow takes it away. The only other option would be not to plow the road, which isn't an option. So, unless you're gonna rebuild the road so that, that pavement isn't already deformed and cracking, there's no, there's no silver bullet to plow it and maintain it and keep it nice and smooth without fixing it.
Dennis, can you or Scott come up and talk about our size of our truck? I think that's something that, I know we have conversations about that, and I know Scott, um, you know, because we, you know, we're not a, we're not a one-size-fits-all community, which is difficult. Because we have, um, I don't know, guys, how many lane miles do we have?
Five-hundred and thirty-seven.
Five-hundred and thirty-seven lane miles. Some of that is rural, some of that is, you know, a Route Four, or a Center Street, or a Minutin Avenue. And then that same truck is also hitting some of those side roads that are off that. But can you speak to the size of our truck anyway, Scott?
Uh, our trucks are seven-yard, which was what we have most of, and then we have some twelve-yard trucks. The twelve-yard trucks are usually put where they go the furthest. So, for instance, we have a wheeler on Court Street, goes all the way out to the Durham Line. That truck has more of a capacity to hold the material, um, doesn't have to come back to the shop as often. Seven yards are tried to be put in a place where they're making all kinds of turns, cul-de-sacs, stuff like that. So, we try our best to place them in the right places. And then we have some one-tons that we're using in parking lots and, and stuff like that. That's the sizes.
Yeah, I think, you know, I know Councilor Walker's talked about this before too. I mean, with our, our blades, what does it do to the pavement? Um, yeah, I mean, I think you're, you're gonna get that, um, but Scott, I don't know if you want to add to any more of that regarding the center lines?
Um, so, we do run carbides on all the trucks. Obviously, if we ran steel blades, we'd be changing them constantly. So we run carbides in them, and they last, some trucks will last all season. Um, and, you know, you see socks flying off it, some people say we plow too much, but obviously, it's doing its job, and we're supposed to scrape everything off, so we don't have to use salt. Salt's expensive. Um, so our trucks do have those on it. Um, one of the other factors with our, size of our trucks is our snow removal. Um, especially losing the snow dump at the high school, we have to haul all the way back to Gray Salon. So, if we had all seven-yard trucks, we wouldn't be able to haul, I mean, anything. So that's, we have to have some of those bigger trucks to do all aspects of our operation.
All good points, you know, they're all, you know, um, it's, when you have a city this size, and you have the road, the amount of roads we have, you know, as Dan said, you know, ten million dollars a year, if you really wanna try to start tackling this, is where we should be. Um, and we're not, we're not coming anywhere near it. Um, you know, I get what the mayor's saying regarding, uh, use. Um, I think what the team does is they do go and look at scoring, evaluating each road. Um, there are certain roads that get to that tipping point where there's no sense in doing anything other than waiting for that road for, for full reclamation on that road. And so, um, so I think that's, that's kind of what they do when they evaluate it, but, Scott?
Yeah, and, uh, this year, as Dan said, the freeze thaw cycle. I mean, at times, there wasn't any frost in the ground in the middle of the winter. Um, and that's what causes the hot top to break up. I mean, some of our trucks have to be really careful, because some of that stuff sticks up and it, it really bites in sometimes. So, we have to be really careful, um, but it's the freezing thaw, and it's the base of the road. So we have to reconstruct some of them to make them better, so that doesn't happen.
This is, uh, worse than last year?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
So, ba- back to roads real quick, if I could. I think it's, I think it's time to have, I think we need to look at the fact that what we want and what we need are probably not the same thing. Especially with some of these rural roads, you know, and if they're in that disarray. Um, and I asked staff for kind of a traffic count if we can find it, I know it's on GIS. But I would be in favor of letting, well, obviously, just letting them go, grading them, gravel, go, what's the price point comparison? Or just ignore them. Because they're not, unless there's a, unless there's an argument, we can't be everything to everyone. Ignore them, take that money, and put it on, into our more in-town, higher-traffic, higher-used, higher-visible areas. I know you have a metric, and I don't want to, but I mean, from a certain point, there's a political ramification here.
I was gonna say, I will be forwarding your name to a few individuals. But, we don't, we, I'll say we spend seventy-five percent of the money in the, the urban center of Auburn, and twenty-five percent on the rural outskirts. Um, but yeah, I, it's the council's decision ultimately where I spend the money. If that's the directive, then that's the directive, it just, I'm, I'm gonna let them, the public know, cause they call a lot. You'll be amazed at how many calls we get about roads.
Seventy-five percent of the people are gonna be very happy.
I, I would like not to micromanage staff on this stuff. Um, the one thing I agree on is the carpeting. I think we could cut that out, I think that's an easy one. But, um, in terms of cost, four and a half percent sounds terribly high. But in my world, and my age, at my age, four and a half percent is still relatively cheap money. And thirteen and a half minus eighty-five, I, I don't think is an unreasonable amount, particularly in light of the fact that we're not spending enough money on the pavement type, you know, road type work that we'd like to.
I know this isn't in the thirteen and a half million, but.
I know this isn't in the 13.5 million, but on the CIP is a, is a third ambulance. At what point do we get enough call volume to justify that? Like, how are you guys coming up with the numbers to justify another expense there?
Yeah, I'd rather Chief come up. We, he and I have had a lot of conversations on this and it is a bit of a moving target, but we are, we are seeing a shift with our EMS calls. No.
10% increase every year.
I think it's a really good question and I, oh. Yeah, sorry. I, I think you have a good question and it's something that we watch and we trend a lot. Just as a point of comparison, our, one, two, three, four, five, six, in the last six years, our EMS call volume has increased 36%. So that's from shortly after when we started EMS until today. The, what we watch is what we call the unit utilization rate, in that we track the calls and how much time during any given day our units are on calls. And being mind, and measure that against industry standards and being mindful that EMS is more than just the time you're with a patient, but there's a lot of documentation, getting your equipment back in service, getting ready for the next patient and those types of things. And so we're slowly trending toward, you know, I said a few years ago that we wanted to start to prepare because the breakpoint for us is when we start to approach 20% utilization for, for our rescues. Four years ago, if you'd asked me, I said we had a five-to-six-year runway before we reached that number. In 2020, we had a slight dip in call volume, and since then, our calls after 2020, from, to 2021, it went up 19.3%, another 4.6%, and we're on par for almost a 10% increase this year. And so we're bumping up against that ceiling of our utilization. There's a couple of things that that does. One is it absolutely wears staff out. We're not an agency that does relatively benign EMS calls, meaning, you know, a facility transfer from a nursing home for a doctor's appointment and back. All of our calls are 911-related, and so there's a lot of more stress associated with that than doing it from a business standpoint because you just don't know what the next call drops. But the other thing it does is it starts to be, increase the number of times in which we don't have a unit readily available for the next call. And so the, the philosophy that we're on, and what we've tried to bring forward in this budget, was we need to start to gear up from an equipment standpoint and from a staffing standpoint to, to be able to staff a third ambulance. And in order to do that, we, we have three ambulances now, but in order to be able to staff three on a regular basis, you need a fourth for, just for maintenance time when something's out for repair. And so that's, that's the goal we have. Like I said, I actually, three or four years ago, thought we had a longer runway for it, but I never anticipated the double-digit call volume increases that we see year over year happening with EMS. The good part about that and is with increased EMS comes increased EMS revenue, and that's where typically all of our EMS capital expenditures are funded, not through bond, but that we earmark some EMS revenue for those funds.
So the entire state is under an EMS crisis. You know, I think that there was a Blue Ribbon Commission that came forward with some recommendations. I think that you're gonna see some, certain regions are gonna get, I guess I would say bailout funds from the state to try to keep some of those EMS services operating. Municipalities will not see any of that, those funds. There is a, a bill being brought forward to continue that Blue Ribbon Commission to take a look at, what are we gonna do as more of a statewide, regional approach to this? I think you have a lot of various issues here. You have, in healthcare alone, you have a reduction in the amount of primary care physicians that are available. And so when you have that reduction, and then you have communities like ours that have a, a large part of our population that are part of generational poverty, they use 911 as their doctor's call. That's, and so our EMS team are rolling out there for things that most people would probably just call their PCP and get an appointment and go, or drive themselves to urgent care. And, and so there's a combination of driving numbers within that, but we do know that healthcare as a whole will have an impact on EMS, and we're certainly seeing that. And so, so yeah, I mean, these are areas that we will need to dig more into. You know, the city ma, the Assistant City Manager and I spent time talking about it today. We spent some time talking about with the mayor, about, you know, this is, this is gonna be a priority that we're gonna need to address in the future. And I think we're fortunate to have Chief Chase and his team. I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't ask for a better team that is focused on EMS. Not every, every community has that level of knowledge and expertise, and we're fortunate to have that. And, and then our, our team does a great job. A, as the chief said, these are the same things that you, you know, you're, we're experiencing, not just with fire, but we're hearing under PD, hearing it within PW is, it's when we're trying to retain people for work, our workforce, when they're going from call to call to call to call, they are going to go someplace else, even if it's less pay, just because the workload is gonna shift for them. And that's what we're seeing. We're seeing some will go, they're gonna, they're gonna leave our, our agency from fire to go to an agency where there is no EMS, and they don't have to deal with that EMS component because that is becoming a drain on organizations. And, and we're seeing it. I mean, I think, you know, I know I'll have a meeting soon with the fire chief. He's probably gonna tell me about two more resignations that are coming through or forward, you know? So that's just, that's the trend. That's where we're at. And how we tackle EMS is gonna be, it, it needs to be a regional approach. Right now, Auburn, I feel, you know, the fire chief, you know, Chief Chase will talk all the time about, you know, each, each community is required to kind of come together on this so that the system stays afloat. If there's one break in that, the whole system collapses. If Auburn was to break, then you'd have some serious issues because Auburn is the strength of a lot of our EMS that we see in our region, and they're doing a great job being able to maintain that. But we're also getting that mutual aid back from other communities because of our call volume increasing. So we're relying on those other towns as well. Yeah, Council, give it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Kudos to their fire department, the fire rescue and EMS and everything. I kind of listened to some of the scanners I can get off online. You guys don't just do Lewiston, Auburn. You also do mutual aid to other municipalities as well. One night, I think you went three times, two ambulances at the same time at different places, not close to Auburn. And, I mean, I wonder, I mean, I know Auburn's took care of and stuff, but not mo, there's not a whole lot of communities that has the quality and the training and the staff that we do and the care that we give all our patients. We treat them all equal, no matter their income or what's wrong with them. So you're kudos. I mean, I can sort of see the need, like you said, another truck, but if the prices of bonding is up a lot right now, I can't support another ambulance as much as needed, same as I can't do on these big tanker trucks or even another police car. We've gotta cut something somewhere and hold the line.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. One thing I would say with regard to mutual aid, certainly there, we're still in a period in which the mutual aid with regard to us giving aid to Lewiston is still off, off balance, if you will. We're still going to Lewiston more than, than they're able to come here. But with regard to the other communities, Poland, Turner in particular, they actually are coming to Auburn to cover calls because both of our ambulances are tied up more than we're going out to them. So we do at times go out to them, but that is an instance in which the mutual aid is biased in the, in our favor, in which they're coming to us more than, than we're going out there. So like the city manager said, it really is a big interconnected network and, and we really need strong EMS agencies around us. It's certainly not competitive because at any one time, it, it takes very little for us to have a motor vehicle accident in Auburn that requires more than two ambulances at a time. That happens quite frequently, in which case we have to tap other strong EMS agencies to help us. Another point, I would say that EMS capital expenses aren't typically bonded and aren't part of the bond package. We fund an EMS capital reserve out of EMS revenue, so there's money already available for those EMS purchases. So whether or not we buy it is certainly a discussion worth having, but bond rate doesn't need to be part of the discussion because the money would already be available. Just two more quick points on, on the ambulance purchase itself. One is timing. Again, with our upward trends, the build time, like everywhere, vendors are incredibly hard to find. So the build time on a new ambulance is at least 24 months. And that was when I asked these questions, when we were formulating the budget in the fall. But the second piece that I would ask is by, by adding to our fleet, as our older ambulances age out, our intent is not to just replace them with another $450,000 ambulance. What we would do is what's called a remount. We take the ambulance box, the patient compartment of that, and we send the whole, we send the whole unit to a factory and they take the box off, put a new cha, truck chassis under it, and remount that box on top for about half the cost. We physically can't save that on our next replacement. We don't have an ambulance kind of as a reserve piece in order to do that cycle. So there are a lot of advantages. And from a timing perspective, I'll be the first to admit, you know, I blew it on being able to anticipate when we needed this because I just did not see coming out of COVID the upward trend in EMS call volume. I thought we had more runway. And then you add on to that the fact that there's an incredibly long lead time to get them built, makes us, makes me feel like I'm behind the eight ball in, in having asked for this.
I'd like to, I'm sorry.
I'll say, you know, an ambulance, we've made a commitment as a community that we're gonna have an EMS department. And so if the professionals say in this situation that we're at the point where we need another vehicle to properly service that, I think I would support that for that particular reason. I would wanna know, you know, how much, are we getting enough reimbursement from Lewiston for the calls that we make there? Like, I see a lot of revenue coming in, but are we losing money doing that? And are there policy decisions that we can make that reduces our exposure to other places as opposed to the citizens, the taxpayers of Auburn? That's my question.
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, sure. So we don't, I wouldn't say that we lose any money for the calls that we run. We are billing those calls, we're collecting revenue from them. What you end up with, I guess you sometimes refer to as opportunity costs, right? There, there, we don't then have the opportunity to make the same money for a pa, a patient that might be in Auburn. Now, it's not that every time we're in Lewiston, we get another call for an Auburn resident, but the opportunity that it could happen certainly does exist. And again, because the strength of mutual aid comes from parity, what we've really have done for three or four years, we've been having this discussion, is, is waiting to see, and, and we have a lot of conversations with United about their staffing and the things that they're trying to do, for them to become a stronger unit because we actually need them to be stronger. We benefit from that because there's parity. I say, tell people all the time, we might have gone there, and don't quote me on the number, three, 300 times, 350 times last year. For me, if we went there 1,000 times, that would be okay if they had to come here 1,000 times. Because if we all build enough infrastructure that we all can take all of our own calls, it's a ton of taxpayer waste. What you want is that combined in the whole system, you have enough to meet the needs when there's a surge. And that's kind of the, the methodology that we're going on. And we've bided our time, but we continue to try to give them feedback to, to try to boost that they're stronger because the stronger they are, the stronger the whole system is when we have that bad day and that surge.
For the, so the Auburn taxpayers may not realize that Lewiston does not have an EMS. Lewiston, the city, doesn't pay for it. It's privately done. It's, it's not part of the Lewiston city.
It is not a municipal service.
Right. It's not a municipal service, so.
But there is a cost to them, so that, that has changed.
Understood, but we have a standardization that, and expertise that we may, that, that we're able to, because we're paying, the taxpayers are paying, and we demand a level of service that we get from our fire department, that we don't necessarily, what you're saying is we don't necessarily get that quality of service in return for what we're paying.
What I will say is Chief Chase, and there are times where, and they obviously talk daily, weekly with regional partners, but there are moments, and Chief has the green light at all times. If there's an event or a staffing shortage that's taking place, particularly in our sister cities, and we don't have the resources or we're concerned about our ability to cover Auburn first, he has let them know, you know, our mutual aid will depend specifically on our availability. And so there have been weekends where the chief has conveyed that message. So he's always balancing, you know, what is our capability versus our, our responsibility regionally.
Yeah, no, I'm very proud of what our fire department does, but I just don't think a lot of people realize that we're one of a kind in the quality and the, and the level of service that you're providing to our citizens and that other folks are taking, are benefiting from that, and we're not necessarily getting the same in return, even though they might pay us for it.
Yeah, I think that's true, and I think another important data point is I'm wholly confident, some of you were avail, were around when we did a study with regard to EMS costs or whatever, but there is no doubt that EMS is a revenue generator for us. The, the revenue far exceeds the expense, the increased expense that, that the fire department incurs for providing it. So we're providing a higher level of service and actually helping to offset all of the fire protection and EMS costs that we do in some way. You know, again, I think the fact that there's a capital reserve for it so that the EMS revenue is paying for its continued expenses speaks to the self-sustaining nature of it, rather than it being a taxpayer burden, if you will. It's actually a taxpayer benefit, both in the level of service and the revenue generated.
Yeah, I think Chief Chase had provided some data, I don't know how many months ago it was now, but just to demonstrate that quality of service that you receive. I mean, if, if you're gonna have a heart attack, have it in Auburn, because this is where your, your, your success rate of living is so much higher, above the national average, above the region, because our team is highly qualified, they have the equipment that's necessary, and they're getting to you in a very quick response and taking you directly to the hospital. So great work from them. Now, as you said, we used to be in a combined service with United, with Lewiston. I think we used to receive $150,000 in revenue every year for United to provide that service. Lewiston received the same amount. Now, because of the shift that's taking place, Lewiston's now paying United to provide that service. It's a smaller amount, but it's, you know, but they, they're no longer just receiving revenue. They're now paying for that service in United. We're monitoring things. We're monitoring what's happening in Lisbon right now. You know, so, I mean, that's a debate that's going on within the Lisbon Town Council. What will happen with their rescue service? If that becomes United, well, what does that look like as far as United staffing that, being able to shift? Could they, if it's United, does that mean they might cover more of Lewiston? You know, those are things that I think that we, we're looking at constantly to try to see because it's all in a flux right now. And so we're trying to monitor the whole system because it's nearing collapse.
Chief, thank you for the EMS services you provide. I know it gives me comfort and I have parents that live in this community and they're aging, and I hope they never have to take advantage of those services, but I find them extremely important knowing the demographics of our community here. Credit all of our first responders, Chief Bone as well. I know that the nature of calls has changed a lot over the past several years. And I just think it's a vital service that we provide to our citizens. And just thinking back to a couple of your comments here, having a, a third ambulance, there are some potential efficiencies down the road. Lack of a better term, playing musical ambulances when you go to have a refit. That's the best analogy I can make in, in regards to, just, just, just putting the, the ambulances on a rotation and being able to appreciate some efficiencies moving forward, might be a little further down the road. But it's gonna make the, the equipment a little more dynamic as far as, as refit. And I'm very sensitive to the workload of all of our first responders. And I think the very least we can do is, is provide the, the appropriate equipment. So I understand these are difficult budget decisions, you know, and it's, and it's at a much higher level. It's a ongoing philosophical argument we all have here on the council. We can raise taxes, we can cut services, or we can create more taxable valuation in the city. So I think in a, in a perfect world, it's, it's a mix of everything, short of cutting the services. And this is a, a service that I'm not comfortable cutting or, or limiting or putting our first responders in a bad situation.
I think just one point of reference, the nature of things is as the city grows and our service demands continue to increase, whether you intend it or not, not continuing to fund a growth pattern that supports the growth that the city sees results in a cut in service. Meaning, you know, if our call volume keeps going up 10% a year, we cannot do that and maintain it with the same budget or a very tight budget, not even keeping up with the inflationary costs. You know, when that comes to a head, we have to cut services just to maintain that. So, you know, as, that, just as a point of reference, you know, other factors, including growth in the city, affect how much work we have to do within the scope of the budget.
Is there any other questions or, I mean, there's some pretty, some summaries, I think, that we could do? Is there any other questions or, I mean, there's some pretty, some summaries, I think, that we could do on the CIP portion of this. You know, if the council's kind of in agreement with the city manager taking a stab at, uh, slimming CIP by five-hundred thousand? That's one, you know, obviously, I think eighty-five thousand of that probably come from carpet. Is there some agreement on that, on carpet? That's pretty nice carpet. Okay, so, you know, um, and just as a, a point of reference too, on the reallocation of potential road, if the council's good at exploring that. We just, Jonathan Labonte just pulled, uh, traffic counts for the roads mentioned here, and they don't register. So that means they're less than?
They're not counting them, so they gotta be under five-hundred.
So they're not being, in other words, very, very, very low traffic counts. So I mean, that's up to, but I'd like to see, if the council's okay with that, I'd like to see an alternate proposal to the utilization of that one-point-five million. And then whether or not the council wants to vote on that, then that's up to the council.
We, we still have to look out to on some of these roads that are on the outskirts of the city because people do travel and, and we'll, we'll talk about the golf course, for instance. There are many that come across to that golf course and they expect us to have a good road. Fox Ridge. They expect us to have a good road coming and going from there. And you drive that road, you're only gonna drive it once or twice on the upper end near it to the Browns Crossing or whatever, because that road is all stove till you know what, so.
So we'll, uh, we'll take a look at it. I think I'm getting a sense of where you'd like to be. Jonathan was gonna talk about some of the airport, uh, capital. I think I'll work that into the, what I could bring back to you. So, uh, and we'll, we'll come up with some suggestions on that. But I think we'll, we'll try to get as close to that thirteen million as we can. Okay?
Yep. Yeah, real quick. So you've got eighty-two thousand for contingency. I assume that that's just in case one of these comes in over bid, so you can shift some funds. Is that what that is?
That and it's rounding for the, plus it's rounding for the bond. Yeah. I think we're good.
Guys, are there any final comments? Good? Okay, we have a meeting on May one.
Thank you.